We're now in public session. So, members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Brian Oberkampf.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Sandra Wilken.
Present.
Trustee Michael R. Venides.
Present.
Trustee Fernando Ferrer.
Here.
Trustee Charles Shorter is, we're waiting. Trustee Myra Lenaris Garcia.
Present.
Professor Jason Young.
Present.
Great. Professor Kimora, did you sign in?
She's the alternate, she will not be attending.
She's not coming today, no problem. Maxwell Velacodney. I think I saw you, Maxwell.
Here.
Great. Deanna St. Hilaire. She's the alternate, okay. And trustee Pocant is not on, okay. So, we have a quorum. The public meeting of the Committee on Facilities Management and Facilities Planning and Management is now called to order, and on March 7th, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202 declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13th, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1, which included a suspension of law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. And Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law, to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in public, in-person access to meetings, and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference callers similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding, and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with the executive order, this board meeting is being held via video conference with a live stream found at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. We are testing a new closed captioning feature today, which you will see on the bottom of your screens, and a copy of the calendar and the agenda is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting, and as a reminder, please mute your audio so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I'd like to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Second Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Gustavo Ordóñez.
Present.
Apparel.
Present.
And Tria Case.
Present.
And Sarah Bartlett, the COPS liaison.
Present.
That's it, Brian.
Thank you, Gal. Now, let's turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely via Zoom, and we cannot see one another, I will announce the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second and I'm having questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. We will take up the following items for approval. Action Item 1A, which is the approval of the minutes of the Facilities Planning and Management Committee's meeting of January 11th, 2021. I move the approval of Action Item 1A. Do I have a second?
Sandra Wilken, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, a resolution passes unanimously. I would now like to address Action Item 1B, the policy counter. Policy Item 1B.1 is a resolution to authorize lease amendment with 225-4 LLC as landlord to extend the term of the lease at 225 Park Avenue, South New York, with a Baruch College daycare center. I now call an Executive Vice Chancellor Hector Batista to provide further background on this item.
Thank you, Chair Oberkampf. Baruch College uses this space to operate Baruch College's Early Learning Center. The Early Learning Center provides childcare service to Baruch College students. Many of these students will not be able to attend college without this critical service this center provides. The university intends to relocate the functions and staff currently located at the current location to a new lease facility closer to Baruch College. But to do this, the university needs to do a one-year extension to negotiate and register a new lease and accomplish sustainable completion of the new build-out. So, we're requesting an extension of one year so we could complete the build-out of the new space.
Okay, thank you, Executive Vice Chancellor. I move the approval of Action Item 1A. Do I have a second?
Arvenidi, second.
Thank you, Michael. Any discussion? Okay. We will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Okay, hearing no extensions or opposition, the resolution passes unanimously. With no more items on the policy counter, I now call on Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista to address informational items 2A and 2B.
Thank you, Chairman Oberkampf. As we have done in the past, we would like to take some time to really bring the committee up to some of the projects you have approved over these last year or last couple of years. The idea is really to allow the committee to really get a sense of all the work that you have put in in order to make sure that the university continues to move some of this real estate forward. Of the 47 projects that you have approved over last year were valued at $368 million, we selected 10 of them. We selected these projects because in some cases, they were, they had some, they're important to the community, they either have some public safety-related issues, or in a couple of cases, they, you know, they political and other community forces, which were really important for those communities, for the community. So, today, we want to go over those 10 projects and allow the board to really get a flavor for the completion of these projects, and then, you know, be able to ask whatever questions you think is appropriate. One of the things that I want to be able to do going forward is really, and you'll start seeing a little later, is to really bring some of the, you know, we have some really talented staff at CUNY, and for the board to really get a flavor for some of the staff and some of their really hard work. So, I'm actually going to turn it over now to Scott Burrell, who's going to walk through some of these projects.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Scott Burrell, and I'm going to walk you through some of the projects that we've completed in the last year. As our Executive Vice Chancellor mentioned, these are a subset of the projects that we did, but are ones that are student and public-facing, are important to the community, or may have a safety component to them. The first project I wanted to show you is at 17 Lex at Baruch College. Here we go, that's a before picture. This is, this first $110 million phase of a multi-phase renovation upgraded building-wide infrastructure and renovated a portion of the lobby off of Lexington Avenue. The lobby work included elevators and ADA accessibility improvements. The new elevators are particularly important as they increase the vertical movement by replacing a number of poorly functioning older elevators with new efficient elevators. And this, as you can imagine, will be beneficial to reopening planning and scheduling as it can more efficiently move students, faculty, and others through the building. The building also looks much more inviting from the street, as you can see on the next set of pictures, where the facade is now full of windows and very inviting. As I mentioned, this is the first phase of a project. Phase 2, which is currently beginning design, will renovate the remainder of the lobby, include additional ADA bathrooms, create some multipurpose space, and renovate some underused space on the sixth and seventh floors of the building.
One thing I want to add with this project, as the board probably knows, one of the, one of the things that we have heard constantly, you as board members, is how our students are constantly lining up. You know, this is going to allow for students to really be able to move through this building a lot quicker, and allow for, for them, you know, at a time when we're trying to plan classrooms for, as the chancellor has said to the system that we're going to be in the force and form of face learning, it allows for the president of that college to be able to stagger the classrooms a lot better and move the flow of students through the building. So, yeah, sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Thank you. The next project is also at Baruch, and it's the Aaronson Student Center, which includes much-needed student gathering space, group study space, and offices. Baruch was able to lease this former basement post office location, which provided an opportunity to develop the student center space. And you can see on the next slide, there's a nice set of stairs coming down from the main level and some attractive meeting space for students. This $5.8 million project was funded entirely from donations to the school and student activity funds. The next project is at Brooklyn College, and it is a restoration of the original and iconic Coppola and Bell Tower at the LaGuardia Library. This work included a replacement of deteriorated metal cladding, new roofing on the terrace, new architectural lighting, and regilding of the iconic dome. As you can see on the after picture, the dome is once again the focal point for the Brooklyn College campus, and looks great as it looks out over that snowy campus scene there. The next project is another really cool project. It's the Schiff Daycare Center at City College of New York. Complete renovation of this building. The project included a complete upgrade and reconstruction of the Schiff House, including exterior landscaping, a new enclosed play yard, and full ADA accessibility. In addition to the exterior work, which you're seeing now in the play areas, the interiors were vastly improved as well. As you can see on this next set of pictures, the space was sort of unattractive and dreary, and the new areas, in addition to being very functional and now ADA compliant, are also attractive and bright for the small children that'll be housed there during the day.
And as the board on this particular one probably recall, one of my early abhorment meetings, this is one of those projects that we had, quite a bit of political noise connected to this project, and a project that has had a lot of issues in one of those board meetings, we had a lot of testifying, and so, we put this on as fast a track as we can, and I think it's a space really looks really amazing for the young people, so. Yeah, Scott.
Next, we go to the College of Staten Island, where we did a soccer field improvement project. As you can see from the before picture, the soccer facility was essentially a grass field and a chain-link fence. The renovations included the construction of new bleachers, a press box, and attractive perimeter fencing, and you can also notice that it provided or installed a modern, easy-to-maintain, safer, artificial field surface. At Hostos College, the retaining wall between the college and the MTA railroad tracks serving the Harlem Valley Line suffered a partial collapse and created a dangerous condition between the college and the railroad tracks, and that condition had been cited by the Department of Buildings. As you can see from the follow-up picture, not only did the renovations remedy the unsafe condition, but transformed this really unsightly area with a new attractive wall structure. At John Jay, we completed a renovation of the swimming pool facilities, and this project completely transformed a sort of older, dingier facility into a beautiful new facility. The project included renovations to the locker rooms, shower rooms, and provided new pool equipment and piping infrastructure. The pool itself was refurbished with new tile, lane markers, and starting blocks, and a new teak ceiling was installed and lighting was also added. As with a number of the projects, the improved lighting really improves the space and makes it more welcoming, and here, the teak ceiling provides a beautiful backdrop for this newly renovated pool facility. Really looks spectacular with the new equipment and the teak.
So, one thing about this is that we, you know, CUNY and Athletics Department, athletic programs, you know, we run our own league. We did have some challenges trying to find places to do our championship, and now this allows us to be able to meet the NCAA standards, which was something that we would be incited for, so I think it's, addresses that issue that was raised by the NCAA.
At Kingsborough Community College, we completed a project that renovated the Bersers Service Window, which is a space where students and others interact with the college. The renovation created an efficient and ADA-accessible service area and efficient back-office space. Again, the lighting and refreshing of the space makes this a much more, and attract, much more attractive and welcoming area in a place that, where the college interacts with the public and students. At Lehman College, at the Speech and Theater Building, the existing amphitheater, outdoor amphitheater, was dated and had functional challenges for both the college and the community groups that use it. The renovation provides a new larger stage with a backdrop scrim, new lighting, new rigging, sound and controls, and then the seating area in front of the house has been reconfigured to provide tier seating in a nice green setting and provides additional access for persons with disabilities. And that's the view of the new alignment of the amphitheater space and stage. And finally, at the School of Public Health, we completed a project that provides a school with a street-level presence to assist in its professional, educational, and community outreach. The school was able to lease the storefront on its 125th Street office space, and the project included a fit-out of the ground floor storefront to create space to be shared by the School of Public Health and the CUNY Career Path Center, and also provided some ground floor educational and office space to support the school's mission. I think all of us, even in the, you know, in the challenging year we had, are very proud of these projects and the accomplishments that we did in the capital program, and want to thank you for your continued support of our important work for the college. Cheers.
Okay, thank you very much. With no more items on the agenda.
No, we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry.
So, the next presentation is connected to our work in sustainability. As you know, CUNY is subject to New York City mandate to reduce greenhouse gas emission by 40%, and a similar state requirement to reduce energy by 35%. We would like to present the committee with some of the operational maintenance efforts and energy performance and capital projects that CUNY undertaken to help meet these goals. We would like to highlight two campuses in particular, Kingsborough and LaGuardia. But I think the more, the other point of all of this is, this allows us to really show you the kind of talent that we have here at CUNY, and today, we're going to introduce it to one of them, Tria Case, who sort of runs our sustainability department, and we'll walk you to this presentation. Tria?
Thank you, Hector. I think I'll get the presentation up here.
Apologies, can I have Sharon Wright?
We can't hear you.
Is Tria, Tria, are you posting the presentation? Gustavo's doing it? Okay, so let me give him back his, because we don't, hang on one second. I removed it, and I will put it back on right now. There you go.
Thanks. Thanks, Gustavo. So, good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Tria Case. I'm the University Executive Director of Sustainability. I manage Sustainable CUNY, which works with our campuses to integrate sustainability across the university and across New York City. Sustainable CUNY has over a decade-long relationship with our campuses to lead efforts in the core pillar areas of sustainability, including composting and recycling and water conservation, plastics reduction, and energy conservation. I'm glad to be able to share with you a snapshot of the facilities components of our successful sustainability program and provide a window into the planned actions going forward in the areas of savings, reducing our carbon footprint, how we work collaboratively with our campuses, and our plans going forward. While the designers and the architects and the engineers work to build in sustainability-related features to construction projects, our focus is on ensuring that the campuses can actualize those components over time and operate buildings with energy consciousness in mind. CUNY is required to meet state and city mandates, and this gives us an opportunity to not only reduce our carbon footprint, it also gives us an opportunity to realize cost savings and generate revenue. From the Paris Climate Commitment to working, next slide, from the Paris Climate Commitment to working with our students whose future depends on our success, we strive to fight climate change every day. New York City has mandated reductions of our emissions by 40%, and New York State has similar mandates with a focus on reducing our energy use by 35%. I'm happy to report that we are implementing a program, and we're well on our way to meeting those goals, and I'll highlight some of that this afternoon. Sustainable CUNY's CUNY Conserve's Program was established to help identify, seek external funding, and to lead campus implementations of operations and maintenance, or O&amp;M, energy efficiency measures and practices, which have reduced campus energy use and GHD emissions. At the campuses where we've deployed this O&amp;M program, I'm going to share some examples shortly, we've reduced greenhouse gas emissions by an average of 27%. These are the tools that actualize our operations and maintenance program to help control our energy use and to protect CUNY's capital investments by implementing the routines and the practices necessary to keep our equipment operating efficiently and as designed, and it works towards meeting the city and state reduction targets. Each of these tools builds on the next, and as I share the campus examples, it'll illuminate the importance of each. The snapshots I'm going to show are not as pretty as maybe as the before and after slides that Scott showed, but they are the day-to-day actions that campus facilities, staff takes, and they have measurable results that we can all be proud of. So, let's look at some examples. At Queens College, remember those hot days of last July, last summer? We had to set up a war room and helped each campus determine equipment that could be shut off safely when the grid got constrained. Our campuses are helping to support the grid, avoiding blackouts and brownouts on campuses and in our surrounding communities as participants in the utilities demand response programs. CUNY's participation in these programs has doubled in the past five years, and we continue to be an agency leader. Beyond our savings in energy and carbon emissions, CUNY's received energy, has received revenue from this program in excess of $1 million each year. Real-time energy visualization allows us to see our energy loads, and our facilities team can now manage energy 24/7, and we can see when something is not operating as it should. For example, on seven campuses, we deployed 52 real-time metering devices, like you see in this picture, and they have supported our participation in the utility demand response program. A robust energy and emissions reduction program begins with collecting energy data so that we can analyze and we can report out what gets measured, gets measured, gets done. You can see how facilities managers are able to manage loads to stay below the red line. Thanks to enlightened, thanks to an enlightened former president at Queens College, they've been able to use these insights to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 22% since 2006. Also, at Queens College and other colleges, faculty are using this energy data as part of their curriculum. These real-time energy tools are one way to optimize the brains of our buildings or the building automation systems. We've been implementing programming and controls upgrades to the systems at Barre Manhattan Community College and other campuses. A great example of using energy data at BMCC to support the building automation system was when staff noticed that energy use was not being set back at night. By making changes to the building automation system, the campus was able to save 196 tons of CO2 annually and $40,000 per year from implementing just this one measure. You see, the green there shows the evening setbacks that the campus was able to achieve because they could now see in real time their energy use. At BMCC, greenhouse gas emissions have dropped 39% since 2006 as a result of energy conservation measures like this. Asset inventories of campus mechanical equipment have been completed for all community colleges, including tiering or prioritizing, so that preventative maintenance schedules can be implemented with a view of critical needs. This ensures that equipment is maintained and operating as efficiently as possible. For example, at Kingsborough Community College, over 800 pieces of equipment have been tagged and are included in their asset inventory. One college, 800 pieces of equipment to maintain, and then prioritize so that the campus can focus on the most critical equipment first. Kingsborough has reduced greenhouse gas emissions 26% since 2006. So, now you see that we have some tools that are helping to make a difference. However, it's critical that we continually train our staff to be able to achieve our goals. We've focused our training on equipment that utilizes electricity because it's the largest segment of our energy use and carbon emissions. Each campus has documentation and even customized videos to help them ensure information is not just head knowledge and is documented in a way that can be shared easily. Because all our campuses are different, every building is like a snowflake, CUNY Conserve's training has been individualized to each campus and is focused on all aspects of building operations. Looking forward, CUNY has the potential to deploy over 20 megawatts of solar. This can help us further reduce our carbon emissions by 4%. Lease revenue could generate an additional $600,000. This is an area that CUNY has been leading across the city. If you're interested in your solar potential of any building or your own building, you can check out the CUNY-built Solar Map at NYSolarMap.com. It's become the go-to source for solar and now battery storage information in New York City. All our CUNY campuses have committed to the state's Renewing the Energy Vision, or REV, Campus Challenge. Recently, LaGuardia was recognized for their leadership in developing innovative dashboard designed by the campus and built for the building operations staff that helps LaGuardia better manage their building loads and respond if a curtailment is needed. LaGuardia has reduced their greenhouse gas emissions 52%. Kingsborough has also been highlighted for their implementation of numerous sustainability measures, including installing efficient water towers, water refilling stations, recycling cooking oil from the cafeteria to use in their green boat on campus. Kingsborough also installed photocell lighting controls in their corridors with windows to make use of daylighting. When we achieve our mandated carbon and energy reductions, we'll realize the savings in our energy budgets. For example, at our senior colleges, we could see a $20 million energy expense savings. Our data has informed our actions, and across the university, we have seen significant reductions, 15% of our greenhouse gas emissions, and we have the tools to build on this accomplishment. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity to share these sustainability program highlights. We can embrace our leadership role because CUNY has talented facility operators, knowledgeable design and construction teams, a willing faculty and staff, and students who know that climate justice is social justice. We're always grateful for the opportunity to thank our community for their hard work and commitment to fighting climate change every day. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Tria. You can see the kind of talent that we have on staff, and I think it's always good to have them showcased in front of the board. Before, I see the chancellor wants to say something, before I turn it over to the chancellor, I just wanted to give the committee a sense of what's coming up next. We're going to do, at our next committee meeting, we're going to do a presentation on real estate, connected to the analysis on air rights, and then, we're going to come back to you in the meeting in June to really talk to you about what that means in terms of CUNY next step. I know that's something that the committee has I know that's something that the committee has been waiting for, so we will be presenting that to all of you. So I just wanted to let you know what's coming up next. So at this point, I think the chancellor wants to say something.
Yes, thank you, Hector. Just two things. I mean, A, I think it's important to have some of these reports because I think we've been in this intensive COVID mode and we feel that all we're doing is sort of COVID-related in the university. I think it's pretty clear that you can see that on the construction side, even though for some time we were sort of limited in the amount of work that we could do for all the obvious safety reasons, that that agenda continues to move forward to upgrade the facilities and provide the best facilities for our students, for our staff, for our faculty and for the community stakeholders that use our campuses, you know, all the time throughout the year. And then also the very, very impressive work on the sustainability area. The area of climate change is very much a key policy item and Tría mentioned even a social justice one, very much part two of the agenda of our governor, our mayor, our elected officials and very much part of our agenda and the Chancellery. And also I think our students, as we know, are particularly sensitive to many of these issues. So I commend the group for their work and look forward to doing a lot more as things go ahead. So kudos to the two teams and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Chancellor. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there anything anybody else would like to add? Okay, with no more items on the policy calendar. Sorry. Yes, with no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second, Linas Garcia.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.